It being the pointed hour, let's call the meeting to order. Call roll.
Sean.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harrod.
Beth.
Henley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Shaw.
Saltzer.
Here.
You're informed.
Thank you. Don Lynch is going to lead us in the indication, if you please stand.
Let's pray. Gracious and almighty God, we come before you this evening with thanks for all of your faithfulness and the blessings that you have given us. Lord, we just thank you for this great city and for the privilege of living here. We thank you for those who govern it and those who serve others. Lord, we pray that the stuff that we do here tonight would be pleasing to you, that our business would be meaningful in your sight. We pray for our community, for those who are widowed, orphaned, ill and infirm, those who are hurting and those who are in need, that you would bring comfort to them and help us to help when and where we can. We pray for traveling mercies for those who are going to be on the road over the next few weeks, and we pray that you would be with us as we go from here this evening, keep us safe, and we'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
And join in the flag salute. Attention, position.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six zero. Item two, citizens' participation. I would remind you that we have a three-minute limit per person and a 12-minute limit per topic. If you would like to address the commission or the public, come to the podium, tell us who you are, sign in and speak your piece. Going? Going? Gone. Thank you very much. This may be a record. Item three, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 1420 East 45th Street from residential estates district to C3 Highway Commercial District, applicant Doris Townsend, case P1417. No action needed, the applicant has withdrawn the application. Item four, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding an ordinance to approve the annexation of 506 acres, more or less owned by St. Gregory's University and the Benedictine Father Sacred Heart Mission, Inc., located in Section Two Township 10 North, Range 3 East, providing for its immediate effect and the forcibility upon passage and publication through the emergency clause. It was my understanding when we first started talking about this that we were going to be required to have two public hearings, and I've openly told people that that's what we were going to do, and apparently that's not the requirement, but since I've told people in town that that's what we're going to do, that's what we're going to do. So, the motion will entertain, the chair moves to defer any action on this item until the January 16th meeting. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against any de-annexation?
Anexation.
Any annexation, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you very much. Call a question. Motion carries six I. Item five, discussion, consideration and possible action to approve a contract with Infrastructure Management Services, IMS, for pavement management, inspection, condition, rating and reporting services.
Good evening, mayors and commissioners. This is a contract for the pavement management system. We went out for proposals a few months ago. We've gotten five back, and we've reviewed those and we've selected IMS to fit our needs the best. So, we entered into negotiations with them on cost and what their services would be. We come back with a contract for y'all to look over, and that's what's before us, voting on that. What this will do is give us a pavement management system that will rate all the streets in our city. They're going to drive every single street and scan it with a laser, and it'll give us a rating system of how bad, how many cracks per block there are, and they'll also do a subgrade-based test where they'll apply 1,000 pounds of pressure every so many hundred feet and test the deflection on the subgrade, so that'll go into the rating system as well. Once they do all that, they'll compile it into a software program that we can manipulate and put our budget into, and come back with suggestions on how to spend our budget for the next five, 10 years based on actual data of the condition of the streets. Along with that, they're also going to populate a GIS shape file as well with all the street signs, and it'll populate all the fields stating what kind of signs we have out there, how many poles, what's on the poles, what's the condition of the signs, and all of our storm sewer inlets as well. So, all that'll be covered under this contract for this process.
So, I mean, is that based on so many miles that they're going to do?
It's based on 230 centerline miles in the city. That's what the estimate and the cost is based on. We believe that to be pretty accurate once you take out all the dirt roads and private roads to the streets. Now, they do have a number in there for testing both sides of the road. On some of them, all the major arterials and the collectors, they'll do both sides of the road because they could be completely different whether it be an eastbound or a westbound lane, so that number comes to 265, but that's the estimate in the contract.
Does that include state highways?
It does.
Okay. So, we have that information.
This would allow us, I guess, to do this more intelligently as far as our program, certainly more equitably, and that's one thing we would look for.
Absolutely. This takes the opinion out of it. You know, two different people can look at each road and come up with two different ratings for it. This will actually give us data that will back up the condition of the street.
I know how valuable an as-built schematic is to you guys, and I commend the staff for taking the initiative to try to do this. It may fall into the category, you've got to watch what you ask for. Is there a motion to approve?
I may approve this.
Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Punch your button, Ben. Motion carries six I. Item six, presentation, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution to approve design phase of the park's master plan.
Mayor and commissioners, this is the design phase of the master plan. We have held two public meetings on this, and I've seen just about every one of y'all at one meeting or two, and we're going to just do a quick presentation over this. The full design plan is in your packets. They're just going, he's just going to hit some highlights tonight. And just keep in mind that, you know, this isn't construction documents. This is a plan that kind of lays out where things will go and how things will look, so when we do get funding for this, we'll start looking closer into the types of equipment and things of that nature. So, at this point, I'm going to let Brian Patrick from CLS come up and kind of hit some highlights on the design phase.
Hello. Thanks for having me do a presentation today.
You're welcome.
And I will be staring at this screen. Like James mentioned, we're just going to hit the highlights. We're not going to really look at what's existing, but what we are proposing for each of the playgrounds, parks. The first park I'd like to talk about is the kids' space part that is not seeming to work. Can you go back a slide? Well, I can just talk about it from this slide. Basically, what it is, we would replace the existing playground. I'm sure many of you have seen this presentation, so we would suggest replacing the existing playground and adding a walking trail wrapping the site. In the large open area to the north, we would add a soccer field, and directly west of that would be a basketball court. Throughout this park, we would add different sizes of shade structures and exercise equipment along the trail. Next slide. This is an example of what it could look like. The kids' space idea really lends to the themed playground of outer space, and for now, we are showing this as 100% accessible with port-in-place surfacing. This could change in the future. Next slide. Next slide. The next park that we talk about is the Briscoe Boy Scout Rotary Park. The main thing that we would be doing here is adding an entrance plaza just north of the existing spray ground and replacing the playground that's a little outdated on the lower right portion of this graphic. Next slide, please. Throughout this park, we would also recommend replacing a lot of the existing site furnishings to make a continuity throughout the city of Shawnee. Next slide. To the north, we are suggesting to add a gazebo and bandstand for small get-togethers the public could gather in the open space. To the south, this is an example of what the entrance feature might look like. Right now, we're just proposing it needs, it needs an entrance to the park. It needs a place to say, "We're here," so. Next slide, please. Again, throughout the length of the existing trail, we would add exercise equipment. This could be added or removed depending on if it's accepted in another park, if it's popular within the city. Briscoe Boy Scout, big, large trees, to me means nature, so the theme for this playground could be a natural playground. Next slide, please. The third park is the Celebration of Life Park in downtown. It's very important. We would expand the plaza to the east and abut the Criterion Theater. This Criterion Theater would be incorporated into the stage design itself, but at this stage, we're saying it needs to be bigger, so. Next slide. As I mentioned, expanding, we would create a raised concert area. This could be used for movies, things like that. And then to the south, shown in blue, would be another smaller playground, 100% accessible. It would be the port-in-place surfacing. And the fourth, the largest park, would be the renovation and expansion of the Woodland Park in downtown. Next slide. Next slide. For the existing park, there are really a few things that we would do. We would recommend adding street trees and replacing sidewalks around the perimeter of the park. We would add a, next slide, please. Adjacent to the spray ground, we'll try to keep all the noise together at the splash pad, so we would add a smaller playground, a multi-generational playground. And then, moving east, we would recommend expanding the, creating a new large park for the downtown Shawnee. Next slide. The expansion, this is what it could look like. The whole idea is keep the pedestrians and the vehicles separate. Next slide, please. In doing this, we created a single loop for the vehicular traffic, and inside that would be a pedestrian walkway so that you could continuously walk around in this circle and enjoy the park without having a vehicle conflict. We would recommend replacing the intersection on the west end of the park with a roundabout. It allows traffic to move more fluidly throughout, and this would also create an opportunity for a grand entrance into the park. Next slide, please. The main focal point of this park would be a large pond. Fortunately, it's in a flood plain. And however, we would retain the existing bridge to save on some costs associated with that. To the south of that pond, we would recommend a large amphitheater similar to downtown Oklahoma City. It might not be that scale, but that idea is really, really nice. Shown to the west of the large open lawn area would be a train-themed playground being next to the Historic Railroad Museum. I think it's important to have that extended from south up into this park. Throughout the park itself, we would, go back one, please. Throughout the park itself, we would incorporate smaller items, such as to the north would be a dog park. To the south of the main entry drive would be basketball courts, two tennis courts, additional parking to the south of that, and then south of the whole circle would be a skate park. The reason, another main reason why it is a circle is because it'll allow the whole circle to be shut down, or closed off, not shut down, for festivals, food trucks, art shows, and the public could continuously walk around and instead of having to go down to the end and walk it back. The fifth park I'd like to talk about is the Optimist Park. Next slide, please. Again, this needed an entrance feature, so we would repurpose the existing asphalt and include more parking. I think there's 20 spaces there. At the terminus of that, parking would be a new restroom with a plaza around that. Next slide, please. To the north of this new restroom, we are proposing a splash pad similar to the size of your current Briscoe Boy Scout Park. And on both sides of that would be a large shelter and then a smaller shelter. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the parking on the south end of that existing lot, we would resurface into a basketball court, a Finston basketball court, and then to the south of that, to allow shade, more shade, we would add another shade structure. Oh, sorry, go back, please. South of the playground, or south of the splash pad, excuse me, we would propose a larger playground. It would be a very added benefit to this park. Next slide, please. The final park I would like to talk about is the Dean Wygant Park. This park presents an opportunity to extend the current bicycle trails and bring it into the park. I think that's very important than having it just stop at the parking, and it would connect, further connect the surrounding neighborhood to this park. We would add two pedestrian bridges. Currently, there's a large drainage channel bisecting the park. We would add riprap to this to prevent it from eroding more, and two additional pedestrian bridges to connect the east and the west. Next slide, please. The main focal point of this park would be, again, another splash pad of the same size as the Briscoe Boy Scout, as far as square foot goes, and surrounding that splash pad more shade structures. Off the terminus of the existing parking, we would add another entrance feature-type thing that is, that we did on the Boy Scout Park. Next slide, please. The existing, we would replace the existing large shade structure and as well as adding another shade structure to the east, more closer to the existing playground. The existing playground, we would add concrete borders around it, and we would add playground surfacing to meet the standards of the current guidelines. Also, also to the, where the existing bridge is to the southwest connecting to the Expo Center, we would want to make that connection. We would make a gate there, and then it would allow the people from the Expo Center to actively use this park. On the, sorry, on the west edge of this, on the east edge of this road, we are proposing to save this one little tree right here because we love trees as landscape architects. By adding parking to the north and to the south of that. Also, on the northwest, it's important to note that we would add two large, not large, we would add two spaces for buses to drop the kids off and have a place to be. In conclusion, it's, you have a great park system, and I think it can only get better.
Thank you, Brian. Most of us have been at the presentations. Are there any additional unanswered questions?
We will have at least one tree, big tree out there, right?
Oh, yeah. Especially at Boy Scout.
Well, we love trees as landscape architects, so we're doing some.
For some of us up here, you have to plant a great big tree because we don't have time for a little one to get back.
Yeah. About 30 years, yeah.
Would entertain a motion to approve and adopt the design phase of the park's master plan. Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six zero. Item seven, consider a resolution to surplus certain city of Shawnee vehicles and donate to the heart of Oklahoma Exposition Center.
Mr. Mayor, this is routine business. We do this frequently, and pass vehicles along to the Expo Center. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Gillum. Is there a second? Be Sean. Any further discussion? Call a question.
Read the ordinance title briefly. Mr. Mayor, resolution clearing certain items.
I do it every time.
Personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items and authorizing the donation of said items to the heart of Oklahoma Exposition Center.
Thank you. Now, call a question.
I assume all these are running in good shape.
Motion carries six zero.
Better than what they have.
Sales tax report.
On the sales tax, we're up a little bit. We're up about $31,000 from last year, which is 2.24%, but for the year, we're only up 1.63%, so we're not quite making budget. We collected $1,436,000, and use tax was actually down, so I'm hoping somebody didn't report properly, so. And, you know, we know the season is really January, February sales tax, so we'll see what happens.
Yes, it is. Keep your fingers crossed. Thank you, Cindy.
So, did they break out a separate deal on the, like, the internet tax or anything? Or is that up or down, or was it?
No, they were, it was down $22,000.
Okay. It's in with the use tax, and you don't get it.
Yes, it's in with the use tax. And last year, I think we had some construction going on, so we get, when they do the construction, like, if someone comes in and does a building, they don't do the use tax or whatever, anything that they bring in until they can, you know, I mean, they get one time, you know, they show all the receipts to OTC and we get one time hit, but, I don't know.
Thank you.
I was kind of surprised the use tax was down.
Thank you very much. Just.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, you have a copy of my report in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. I'll just highlight a few items briefly this evening. Just a reminder that effective in January, our new start time is 6:00 PM for our meetings. That's just kind of an announcement for those in the audience and at home watching. Also, of course, the first meeting in January has been canceled, and so January 16th is our first meeting of 2018. Wanted to mention our shop with a cop event that happened last week. Just a wonderful event. We had over 70 kids that participated, and I think nearly that many officers from participating agencies all over the county, and Shawnee PD, also tribal governments, OBU, County Sheriff, and others. I don't want to, I don't want to hit everybody because I'll inevitably forget someone, and we just had a wonderful event, and Ball Pipe &amp; Supply has sponsored that and worked with us on that event, I think, for nine years now, so wanted to give them a public mention. Thank you for your action with the consent agenda. One of the things on the consent agenda was going out for requests for qualifications for a city insurance consultant. We, that's something that we do periodically. We've been with our current consultant for about, I think, seven or eight years, and I have no issues with our current consultant. However, it's always good to take solicitations and review offerings from other firms and consultants, and so that's what your action allows us to do. Any consultant can submit a proposal. I want to make that clear, that this process will be open and public. A contract will be presented to you probably sometime in February, and so any interested consultant has about 30 days to review and submit their response by January 19th, and we do maintain a mailing list, and we've had several call already, and so we have four or five names, but of course, we'll also be publicly available on our website, so, but if you know anyone out there that is interested in taking a look at serving us in that capacity, please direct them to me or to our website. Lastly, I wanted to mention that our airport manager, Kenan English, is, has accepted a position in Phoenix, Arizona, and this is his last meeting, so I just wanted to honor Kenan for his four and a half years of service. He's done a great job at the airport and served us all and served the community very professionally, so we wish you well, Kenan. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You're not going where they have snow, is it?
They have snow. It just doesn't last very long. Is there any new business? Do you have a question?
Yeah. Does the, fire stations seem to be moving kind of slow over. Brian, is there some particular thing we can do to help it along?
We've got the siding and the roofing material that's being delivered. The large container truck that you see there now is actually full of insulation, and our delivery date for the roofing panels, I believe, is in early January, and so I think, hopefully a month from now, you're going to see that roof and hopefully some sidings go up, and it will look a lot more complete in about, hopefully, 30 to 40 days or so.
That's RBR. I know the truck out there, I think it's, they're the ones that's furnishing the roofs and panels, but they're out of Fort Gibson, and I've worked with that company. They're a good company.
Good.
Have good materials, so I've worked with them several times. I know the truck out there.
Anyone else? Is there any new business? No, sir. Commissioners comment?
I just want to, I wish everyone a happy holidays, safe holidays, Christmas and New Year's Eve.
They, I'd like to spread my appreciation for the commission and contributing on the lunch we had for the city employees. We had a, I was talking to Linda Aggie, she's done it one time, and I talked to Steve Smith, and he doesn't seem like we had a good crowd, so I do appreciate y'all's help, appreciate the employees. And James, I sure appreciate your help and Kerry's help in cleaning up and so forth. Thanks a lot. Really made a nice success out of the province. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Good, I'm saving time for you.
Ben?
Yeah, fine.
Okay. Thank you. I have some comments that I need to make, and I don't like reading as opposed to speaking extemporaneously, but I've tried to choose my words very wisely, so with that said, I'm going to, I'm going to read my comments. In the December issue of the CPN Tribal Newsletter, Chairman Barrett devoted his column to St. Gregory's and its failed attempt to obtain financing guaranteed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Chairman Barrett asserts that the city of Shawnee is at the heart of this failure as requiring St. Gregory's to maintain city water, police and fire. The fact is that those things were requested by St. Gregory's and were not a condition of the city. It is true that they are included in the contract, but factually not at our insistence. The USDA's criteria is that the municipality must have a population of 20,000 people or less. It is my informal understanding that this threshold may have been not strictly enforced at times in the past. It is also my understanding that when Shawnee effectively passed the 30,000 threshold population, the excess can no longer be ignored or viewed as temporary or conditional. He states that "my statement at a previous commission meeting that we were not going to roll over was directed at the CPN." This is absolutely false, and the context of the meetings and discussions regarding the de-annexation proposed to me by Governor Walters confirm that. At all times, my conversations regarding any term of re-annexation dealt strictly with the economic impact of the commercial development on the property, which might vest any sales tax receipts in what could be construed as any jurisdiction other than the city of Shawnee. Since I took office, I have told anyone that would listen that I have no intention of fighting with Rocky and the media. My view is that it helps neither his organization nor ours, but it is my, but it's personal when he calls me a racist. when he calls me a racist. My first inclination was to let it roll off my back, but doing so might actually be interpreted as acquiescence on my part. I don't want anyone who might believe that this garbage to be swayed. It is true that I make off-color jokes about virtually every group and individual that one can imagine, including my late wife, whom is the singular person in my lifetime held in highest disdain. I find stereotypes of all kinds to be an insult to intelligence and take every occasion to pick the scab, so to speak. Any casual observation of my actions, my hiring practices, my personal friendships, or any other criteria by which one chooses to apply will result in a conclusion that I am truly looking through those things. Admittedly, I am a tough taskmaster and expect much from those with whom I interact, which causes me to appear arrogant and condescending. I am absolutely guilty, but absolutely not racist. If I could wave a magic wand and make racism disappear, I would do so, but I cannot fix it. What I can fix is me, and I did that a long time ago. Rocky can pick on me for the many faults which I do have, but pick one that I actually have and quit hiding behind your own biases. In my 40-plus years of consulting with businesses from mom-and-pop stores to publicly traded companies, not a single one has made a statement suggesting their desire to oppress or otherwise hold back employees. People in my environment simply neither think that way nor act that way. I very much admire the job that Rocky has done through the years and the exceptional organization that he has helped build. I remember when the tribe was poor as a church mouse. CPN are an asset to the community in ways too numerous to count. They are an economic engine for the county and the largest employer in Potawatomi County. They contribute in so many ways, and I look forward to the day on which we can truly partner for the betterment of our community. By the way, I include CPN in my definition of both a community and a stakeholder. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hare. Seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority.
With the airport guy, I'm not going to make any comments.
Would you like to make a speech? Best of luck. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda of the Shawnee Municipal Authority.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford. Seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, call a question. Motion carries six zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.